I'd like to welcome you to the September 15th, 2021 meeting of the Oceanside City Council. I'd like to go ahead and call this meeting to order and begin with our city clerk who may be giving some introductory comments.
Yes.
Ms. Navarro.
We have a meeting advisory for tonight's meeting. If you are on Zoom and wish to speak on an item, you must have registered to speak with the clerk's office prior to 4:00 PM. If you are in attendance and wish to speak on an item, please register to speak with one of our staff members in the lobby prior to when the public comment is called for the item. If you have material to distribute to council, please hand it to me and I will distribute it to the council for you. And with that, we will do the roll call.
Thank you.
Mayor Sanchez.
Here.
Councilmember Jensen. Councilmember Rodriguez.
Here.
Councilmember Weiss.
Here.
And Deputy Mayor Keim has an excused absence tonight.
Thank you very much. And please rise, everyone, for the invocation. We have today Pastor Amanda McGlynn from King of Kings Lutheran Church.
Thank you all for having me here with you this evening. Let us pray. God of all people, thank you for the opportunity to gather here this evening, to be united in our shared love of this community, which you've called each of us to be a part of. I ask for your spirit to remain here with us tonight. Open us each to new possibilities. Stir us to action to build a community that works for the good of everyone. Break our hearts for those for whom our society would deem the least among us. Empower us each in our lives and our work to better love and serve you, our neighbors, and all of creation. Give us patience through disagreement and vision to work towards the future that we are building with you. Lord, for these and for the prayers of our hearts known only to you and for the countless blessings that we share, we give you our thanks, for yours is the kingdom, the power, and the glory forever and ever. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor McGlynn. Thank you very, very much. Please remain standing and join with me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. And we're going to begin Proclamations and Presentations with Manufacturing Day and Manufacturing Month, California. We have with us today Michelle Geller, our Economic Development Manager. And as she gets ready, I'm going to go ahead and read this proclamation, excuse me, recognition. And it is, as I said, honoring National Manufacturing Day and Manufacturing Month, California, 2021. And that would be October 1st for the day, 2021, and then the whole month of October, 2021. Whereas the first Friday in October is designated as National Manufacturing Day and was created as an opportunity to recognize and celebrate the many contributions of manufacturing in the United States. And whereas recognizing that California has the largest number of manufacturers in the nation with representation across virtually all manufacturing sectors, California Manufacturing Technology Consulting and its partners celebrate the entire month of October as Manufacturing Month, California. And whereas CMTC, the California Manufacturing Extension Partnership Center, and their partners have been actively promoting National Manufacturing Day and Manufacturing Month, California. And whereas due to these efforts, manufacturers throughout California will, in a coordinated effort, help illustrate what manufacturing is by participating in Manufacturing Month, California events designed to increase public awareness of modern manufacturing and the great career opportunities in manufacturing affords. And whereas through these individual efforts and dedication, CMTC has helped communities and future generations of manufacturers throughout California. Therefore, I, Mayor Esther Sanchez, on behalf of the City of Oceanside, do hereby recognize Friday, October 1st, 2021 as National Manufacturing Day and October 2021 as Manufacturing Month in California in the City of Oceanside, with many thanks to CMTC and their partners for their outstanding support of this worthy event.
Thank you, Mayor and council, for acknowledging Manufacturing Day and the important role the manufacturing industry plays in creating quality jobs for Oceanside residents. Oceanside is home to a variety of manufacturing firms, from biotech companies like Genentech to recreational equipment companies like Hobie. These two companies and many more will be at a job fair the city is hosting in partnership with the Oceanside Chamber of Commerce and visit Oceanside on Saturday, September 25th, from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM in the Civic Center Plaza here in downtown Oceanside. We're going to have over 40 local employers there across multiple industries. And I encourage all local job seekers to attend. More information is on our website there at osidesbiz.com. And I'll have some flyers that I'll leave at the table here in council chambers. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, I'd like, yes, big hand there. Thank you. Oh, before you leave, if you could make an announcement about something really great that's happening this month? What great thing is that?
Besides the job fair?
Yeah, there you go. Okay. Go ahead and announce it.
Oh. Um, it's Saturday, September 25th, 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. Thank you.
Yeah, there are, what did you say, over 40 right now?
Over 40 employers, yes.
So, and it's here at the Civic Center?
It is indeed.
So come on down. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next, I'd like to have Maggie Mesa come on down, the Chapter Director of Blue Star Families. You can come right up here.
You'll be up there?
Yes, you can. Ms. Geller is on staff, so she got away with being at the podium. But I really want everyone to see you up here. And this is a very, very special request that we received from Maggie on behalf of Blue Star Families. And it is a certificate of recognition honoring Blue Star Families Welcome Week 2021, September 25th through October 3rd. Whereas Blue Star Families annually designates the last week in September as Blue Star Welcome Week. And whereas during this week, we recognize the more than 600,000 active-duty and transitioning military families who move to new communities each year. And whereas the majority of these permanent change-of-station, PCS, moves occur during the summer. And whereas only 27% of military family respondents to the 2020 Military Family Lifestyle Survey reported that they feel a sense of belonging to their local civilian community. And whereas a sense of belonging is so important to the well-being and readiness of active-duty military families. And whereas we commit to ensuring that military families feel a strong sense of belonging to their local civilian communities. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Mayor Esther Sanchez, on behalf of the City of Oceanside, do hereby recognize the week of September 25th through October 3rd, 2021, as Blue Star Families Welcome Week in the City of Oceanside. So much. Thank you. No one, I've never had anyone so reluctant. What I'd like to do is give you the mic.
Okay.
Because you are the Chapter Chair, right? Director. And so you've been doing this for a while. And you actually live in North County.
I do.
Yes.
Yeah, we just bought a house here. So we are Oceanside residents, so.
So here we go.
Okay. So, Blue Star Families is, we're actually a national nonprofit, but we have a chapter here in San Diego. And our mission is to connect our military families to their community for that sense of belonging. And we do that through meaningful programs and support from our communities, such as Oceanside, that has such a large military presence. And we do see a lot of awesome events. Like, we just had our military event here in Oceanside. But it's for community members like yourself to recognize that there are people here that not only support our nation, but support the mission and support, that they need support for their families in order for them to feel like they belong. And so I ask you to, you know, get to know your military community, wrap your arms around them and help me to support them and navigate their way while they're here in Oceanside.
Thank you very much. We do have very deep roots here in Oceanside for military deep roots. Because of Camp Pelton being next door back in the '50s and ever since then, we have, this has been a very welcoming city for our military families and our active-duty. Yes. So, like to go ahead and have a picture done? Thank you so much. Thank you. Absolutely. Thank you. Big hand for her. And Blue Star Families. Next, if we could have Wanda Prosser, Honorary Chapter Regent, and Adele Lancaster, Honorary Chapter Regent and Vice President General of the American, the Daughters of American Revolution Santa Margarita Chapter, come on down so that we can talk about Constitution Week, a very, very critical, very important document that we have and that we honor every year. Thank you so much.
As a side, our Chapter Regent is a Blue Star Mother.
Wow. Okay. Well, this is something that Oceanside has been able to honor every single year. And I think most recently, you've had three different mayors, right? You've had Mayor Jim Wood, Mayor Peter Weiss, yep, guy over there, and then, and then me. So, whereas September 17th, 2021 marks the 234th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion. And whereas in 1955, the Daughters of the American Revolution, DAR, founded in 1890, petitioned Congress to set aside September 17th to the 23rd annually to be dedicated for the observance of Constitution Week. The resolution was adopted by the US Congress and signed into public law on August 2nd, 1956, a very good year, by President Dwight D. Eisenhower. Public Law 915 forever guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designated September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Mayor Esther Sanchez, on behalf of the City of Oceanside, do hereby proclaim September 17th through September 23rd, 2021, as Constitution Week in the City of Oceanside and urge all of our citizens to reaffirm the ideals the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties, remembering that lost rights may never be regained.
Thank you, Mayor Sanchez and councilmembers, for continuing this traditional proclamation and presentation, recognizing the importance of the document. This Friday marks the beginning of Constitution Week, September 17th to 23, to promote the study and education about the United States Constitution. Members of the Daughters of the American Revolution encourage all to join in this commemoration by ringing bells wherever you might be at 4:00 PM Eastern Daylight Time, 1:00 locally. This Constitution, the supreme law of the land, was designed with deliberate, separate, and balanced governmental powers, the executive, legislative, and judicial branches, to safeguard the interests of the majority rule and minority rights of liberty and equality. Specific language, too, was used to protect states' rights from an overzealous federal control. Tonight, just consider this. The Constitution, as presented to the populace September 17th, 1787, has been amended 27 times. The first 10, the Bill of Rights, were added immediately as part of an agreement to secure ratification of the Constitution. One amendment appealed an earlier amendment for prohibition. So really, the United States Constitution has only been added to or amended 15 times in the past 234 years. Rather, an amazing testament to the brilliant minds using their collective wisdom to form a government of the people, by the people, for the people. This is certainly something to celebrate. So thank you again.
Thank you. This is such an honor to be able to do this every year and to be reminded of such a critical document. And through good times and even dark times especially, this is, you called it a guardian. It's so important to have this guardian that has always been there for us. So thank you and for, thank you for, and I wanted to ask you a little bit about these pins that you have and that Wanda has. If you could just say a few things about that, because...
They're considered insignia with the small, the little one being the symbol of the organization, the National Society, Daughters of the American Revolution. But the different pins, our organization is based on heritage gets you in, but it's our service and friendships that keep us members. And so the pins signify work with education, work with historic preservation, and work with patriotism. So we have commemorative pins, we have service pins, we have, we also have donation pins that support those three tenants of this society. And under the whole umbrella, and in my administration, I was saying to Mayor Sanchez earlier, my administration, my theme was California Daughters in service to God, Home, and Country, or celebrating service to God, Home, and Country. I can't even remember what it was right now. But, but it was all based on service. But our motto is for God, Home, and Country. So those three tenants, education, historic preservation, patriotism, under the umbrella of God, Home, and Country. Thanks for asking.
Thank you. And we're going to have a picture, but I want to say again, this is the Santa Margarita Chapter of the Daughters of American Revolution. And they meet right here in Oceanside. So tremendous. Chartered in Oceanside.
When?
1929.
In 1929. Does anybody remember? No, I didn't think so. Thank you. And we're going to go ahead and take this picture and... Thank you. Big hand. Big hand. Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay. Last proclamation for the evening is National Hispanic Heritage Month. And could we have the folks that are here for that come on up? Ed Becerra from Education Begins in the Home, Monica from the Library, that has done so much for us locally and working on a project in John Landis Park. Luiso Seguera, who has been teaching Ballet Foclorico for many years now and was beginning to teach mariachi, right? And you've got a few of our students here. And then Shema Navarro and Manuel Navarro. Shema does the Aztec dancing. And Manuel has the Car Club, Por Siempre Car Club. And you participate also in Dia de los Muertos, right? All these years, too. So proclamation. Whereas the City of Oceanside commemorates National Hispanic Heritage Month every year, usually starting with the annual Oceanside Noche Mexicana, a free community family cultural event held annually in September at the Oceanside Civic Center Plaza, usually attended by thousands of Oceanside residents and visitors. And whereas the commemoration of Mexican Independence Day in Oceanside has been celebrated through the wonderful and generous collaboration of NBC 7 Telemundo 20, the Oceanside Public Library, Friends of the Oceanside Public Library, Luiso Seguera and his Ballet Foclorico Tapatio de Oceanside, Shema and Manuel Navarro, Calpoli Omayokan, Danza Azteca, and Por Siempre Car Club, St. Mary's Star of the Sea Church, Ed Becerra and His Education Begins in the Home, Reggie Gayetta and His Restaurant La Perla Tapatía, Vista Community Clinic and the City of Oceanside. And whereas after a blessing by St. Mary's Church and the Aztec dancers Calpoli Omayokan, the event usually includes performances by Ballet Foclorico Tapatio de Oceanside, Mariachi Juveni de San Diego, and other local Latino bands, singers, and dancers, including the very special guest performance by talented singer Angelito Garcia of America's Got Talent and La Voz Kids. The event traditionally closes with a representative from the Mexican consulate presenting a reenactment of the Grito de Dolores, Cry for Independence. And whereas National Hispanic Heritage Month is celebrated from September 15th through October 15th every year, which honors the histories, cultures, arts, and contributions of American citizens and residents whose ancestors came from Mexico, Spain, North, Central, and South America, and the Caribbean, bringing pride to our Latino-bicultural families, seniors, and youth. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Mayor Esther Sanchez, on behalf of the City of Oceanside, do hereby proclaim September 15th through October 15th, 2021, as National Hispanic Heritage Month in the City of Oceanside. So thank you. You know, we have been challenged because of COVID and this year especially, parents were still not really ready to let their kids practice. And so we did have a Fiesta Mexicana in Baldurama Park. Next year, we do promise to make the event come back again. And I believe it's something like 18th year, something like that. And you'll, we'll have to figure that out. But this is a great time for our kids especially. This is really about our kids and showing them that truly, truly, culture, family, community means a lot. And when you are proud and you know who you are and you are proud of who you are, it really gives you that much more opportunities to do even, you know, everything you want. And that's really the story here. We do this every year. A lot of times, you know, I mean, and we do this for free. This is, we always provide this event as a free to the community. We don't charge for anything. We raise the money to get this done. And we do it to show Oceanside and especially the kids that this is a beautiful culture, that we have so many cultures here. We're such a diverse community here in Oceanside and that every one of us is very special. So thank you very much. And like to go ahead and, let's see, would anyone like to make, say a few things? Monica.
Just really briefly, the library is celebrating and inviting you to celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month. We're going to be celebrating authors of Hispanic heritage all month. And we have book lists and storytelling and programming that are going to be focused on that. So we'd like to invite you to come visit us this month at the library.
Thank you. We're going to have a picture. Can you fit everybody? Let's squeeze in a little bit more. Yeah. Thank you so much. Okay, closed session report, Mr. Mullin.
Thank you, Mayor Sanchez. The council met in closed session to discuss Item 1 on the agenda, conference with labor negotiator on the status of negotiations with the Oceanside Police Officers Association. Council also met on Item 2, conference with real property negotiator involving the property located at 315 Harbor Drive South. Negotiating parties, City of Oceanside and the Oceanside Sea Center. Under negotiations are price and terms for a proposed lease amendment. There's no action under the Brown Act to report on Items 1 and 2 at this time.
Thank you very much. Close, excuse me, consent calendar items 4 through 12. Are there any requests to speak from the public?
There are no requests to speak from the public.
Okay, Councilmember Weiss?
I'd like to poll Items 6 and 10 and move approval to the balance.
6 and 10. Councilmember Rodriguez, did you have any to poll?
I would just want to make comments on Item 7.
You just want to make comments on Item 7?
Yes.
Okay, did you want to go ahead and say that right now? And then we'll...
I just want to thank city staff for moving extremely fast on this, this need at Prince Park, also known as Alex Road Skate Park. Those kids are out there, some of them, all day long. And it's going to be nice to have actual clean restroom facilities. There's going to be two unisex bathrooms, solar. So we're helping the environment. And we're going to temporarily hook up some water and water fountains. And so instead of going across the street or figuring out where to go to the bathroom, they're going to be able to use these facilities. And we're going to be supporting our youth. So thank you, city staff, for expediting this. And Councilmember Jensen for prioritizing this. I know this is your district and the youth of our district. Thank you so much.
Okay, we have a motion. And I believe you seconded the motion to pass Items 4 through 12, except for pulling 6 and 10.
Motion approved, 4-0.
Okay, Item number 6 is approval of a purchase order in an amount not to exceed $57,141 to Bellingham Marine of Dixon for manufacturing and delivery of two finger docks and authorization for the Financial Services Director or designee to execute the purchase order. We have staff. Thank you.
And I'll just, I can do both 6 and 10 at the same time. I just, because I have a question for...
Okay, let me just say Number 10. Number 10 is approval of a public works agreement with Joke Heavy Construction of Brea in the amount of $88,965 for emergency repairs of the Harbor Fishing Pier and authorization for the administrative officer to execute the agreement upon receipt of all supporting documents. And your questions, comments?
It appears that the money for both of these are coming out of what would be your annual maintenance budget, which has a current balance of $279,000. With these two, that's about $147,000, which is just slightly over half. So I suspect if you're taking it out of your annual maintenance budget, then over the, since we're essentially into the, not even two months into the budget year, your long-term harbor maintenance budget is going to, at some point, potentially suffer and there'll be maintenance issues that you won't be able to comply with.
Honorable Mayor Sanchez. Councilmembers, Councilmember Weiss, you're correct. These were both unplanned, unbudgeted items. So we'll have to review our budget throughout the remainder of the year and make adjustments if necessary.
Thank you. Move approval, staff recommendation.
I'll second that. There's a motion and a second. No other comments.
Motion approved, 4-0.
Thank you. We're now on general items. Item number 13, adoption of a resolution authorizing the city to accept grant funds. I love grant, that word, those two words, grant funds. An amount of $3,500 from the Department of Defense Office of Local Defense Community Cooperation Defense Community Infrastructure Program for the construction of the new fire station number one, approval to appropriate grant funds for the project, and authorization for the city manager or designee to execute the agreement. We have a report by Brian Thomas, our city engineer. Mr. Thomas?
Thank you, Honorable Mayor. City council members seem to be having technical difficulties. Oh, there we go. Before you tonight is a grant application or consideration for fire station number one. I'd first like to thank the fire department staff, the water utilities staff, my staff as well for helping prepare the grant documents to move this thing forward through the Department of Defense. So staff is recommending the city council adopt a resolution to accept a grant of up to $3.5 million from the Office of Local Defense Community Cooperation, or the OLDCC, for fire station number one relocation, to appropriate grant funds to the project to offset Measure X commitments and to authorize the city manager or her designee to execute the agreement. Our background. Fire station number one has been located at 714 Pierview Way since 1929. The station is seismically insufficient and does not meet current building codes for essential facilities, nor does it meet the current needs for the fire department with respect to apparatus use replacement. Conceptual plans were completed in 2006, but were never, but were shelved due to a lack of a funding source. In November of 2018, the citizens of Oceanside voted to approve the half-cent sales tax, Measure X. In 2019, Measure X funds became available to the public to fund public safety and infrastructure projects. Fire station number one was one of those projects identified as a safety project. The new station will allow for three new additional apparatus space, allow for a fire engine and a fire truck ladder company, an ambulance, a battalion chief while providing accommodations for additional firefighting equipment, such as a brush engine at need. Adding these amenities will cut down on response time, especially for the ladder truck, which is currently assigned to station number seven, which is located farther from the front gate of Camp Pendleton and is located deeper within the city. As a reminder, unless voters approve an extension of Measure X at the ballot, the program will end in 2026. In September 2019, a professional service agreement was executed with STK Architecture of Temecula, California to prepare the current plans, specifications, and estimates for it. Last September, staff brought before city council another DOD grant and authorized the city's utilities department to apply for a $5.3 million grant through the U.S. Department of Defense, Office of Economic Adjustment, Defense Community Infrastructure Pilot Program, or the DCP. The city was not successful at that time, but was encouraged to apply for the DCP 2021 grant through the OLDCC. We have been successful this round of grants by showing the nexus between fire station one's new location and the main gate at Camp Pendleton. Project will serve to improve resiliency at Camp Pendleton through mutual aid and boundary drop protocols, allowing the two agencies' fire departments to deploy to the nearest available units to the emergency regardless of jurisdictional boundaries in order to achieve a faster response time to increase access to additional local resources and improve effectiveness. The new station will provide added benefit to Camp Pendleton. And lastly, Camp Pendleton staff have provided a letter of endorsement for this project. During the July 2021, during July 2021, the city's utility department submitted a pre-application for the grant to the DCPI grant through the OLDCC for fire station one. On August 17th, the OLDCC notified the city that it was one of 13 entities being invited to submit the formal application for a grant of up to $3.5 million. Our staff continued to work to finalize the project. Of the 13 projects selected, Oceanside Fire Station One was selected along with two other projects in California. One was March Air Reserve Base in Paris, California. The other was Naval Base Ventura County. On September 14th, staff received notification the grant was ready for execution pending city council acceptance of the grant and to authorize the execution of the documents related to the grant. This is our current rendering of our two-story fire station. The new fire station will be constructed across the street at 602 Civic Center Drive, where the current code enforcement site is. The new station will be two stories in the Irving Gill architecture style and will house 12 fire personnel. Will contain five apparatus space for fire engines, a ladder truck, additional firefighting equipment, a battalion chief vehicle, an ambulance, and will also contain a training room that can be used not only by Oceanside fire staff but by Camp Pendleton staff as well. The DCP grant acquisition has been a cooperative effort between fire, water utilities, the Department of Defense, Camp Pendleton, and Development Services. Initially, our cost for the two-story station was estimated at roughly $17 million. As costs have increased due to COVID-related supply and labor issues, the revised amount is estimated to be about $18.6 million. The DCP grant will allocate up to $3.5 million in federal funds to offset Measure X funds originally scheduled for the construction of the project. This will allow Measure X to reallocate the grant amount to other public safety or roadway projects as directed by the Citizen Oversight Committee and City Council. So, at this time, staff is recommending adoption of the resolution, accepting the grant of up to $3.5 million from the Office of Local Defense Community Cooperation for fire station one relocation, appropriate grant funds to the project to offset Measure X commitments and to authorize the city manager or her designate to execute the agreement. I remain available for any questions.
Thank you very much. Do we have any requests to speak?
There are no requests to speak from the public on this item.
Thank you very much. So, back to the council. Councilmember Rodriguez?
With respect to this grant, this is great news. Has the project cost? You're notating under the physical impact that there's a 20% contingency. This project has always had a 20% contingency. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
That is correct.
And you're referencing just some environmental obsolescence that this amount has gone up in the past six months due to increased labor costs as a result of COVID, of the COVID pandemic. So, have the contractors and the bids, have they provided a modified bid on the construction? Or where's that information coming from? Is that just...
Councilmember Rodriguez, thank you for the question. The increases come just from industry and discussing matters with other contractors for other projects throughout the region. We've not advertised for bids for this project yet, so...
This is just staff's estimation?
Yes.
Got it. Very, very good. Okay. And then, any additional funds that are left over? Because these came from Measure X, majority of them, or came from Measure, plus now we have this grant. So, those carried-over funds are just going to go back into Measure X pot and are going to continue to go forward? Or can they be used toward unfunded CIP? Because we've got a lot of grants coming in with our beach improvements with, you know, over the last probably year, we've gotten some major grants on our shovel-ready projects. And so, I think from my perspective, I would like to see Deanna just maybe an updated Measure X unfunded project game plan and/or an updated CIP on, you know, the laundry list of unfunded projects with that, that we can reallocate and keep this money moving forward for important infrastructure projects in the City of Oceanside. But outside of that, I'd like to move approval.
Thank you. Councilmember Weiss?
Second.
Do you have any other comments?
No.
Okay. This is fantastic news. I am so excited that we have been hearing news after news after news of grant funding. So, we obviously have some shining stars among our staff who have been working on writing these grants, putting them together, and being able to be successful. So, I think it's phenomenal. I think it speaks to the representation that we have that are able to help us get through at the federal level, at the state level. It's very, very exciting. You know, from swimming pools to fire stations to beachfront improvements. It's just been really, really fantastic. I do know that Measure X does have, while it was a general sales tax, it does have some self-imposed kind of restrictions in the sense that this is, we made certain promises to the community that the priorities would be, you know, as they are. So, I'm sure that that will be coming forward by staff. So, there's a motion in a second. Please vote.
Motion approved, 4-0.
Thank you. Item number 14 is presentation of the draft Oceanside Housing Choice voucher administrative plan for review and public comment. This is not for a vote. This is for review and public comment. We begin with a report by Salvador Roman, management analyst in the housing department. And we also have our neighborhood services director, Leilani Hines, present for any questions as well.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. My name is Salvador Roman, and I am here to present on a very exciting new program that we have launched. It is my birthday and I'm super excited to share this information with you.
Happy birthday, Sal. I was going to say, happy birthday.
But I'll go ahead and get started.
Mr. Mullin, is it your birthday too? Oh. Oh, but you are buying drinks, though. Thank you.
So, the presentation will be on the overview of our draft administrative plan to include the new EHV Emergency Housing Voucher Program. At this time, there is no approval needed. We're just here to present and let you know of the public comment period. So, a little bit of quick background. And just as a reference, this presentation is a high-level summary of the very large and very extensive HUD Notice, DIH.
It's big?
Yeah, it is huge. I'm learning how extensive and detailed the HUD regulations are. And this is just one portion of our HCV program. So, this comes from the funding of the American Rescue Act. Out of 70,000 vouchers, emergency housing vouchers, 819 were designated for San Diego County. Four housing authorities were selected and we were one of them. San Diego Housing Commission were the other, County of San Diego, and National City. We received 43. The HUD requirements. So, these are the essential requirements to be eligible for this voucher. Now, that doesn't mean that there's priority populations, but just when I reference requirements, this is what I'm talking about. Either literally homeless, at risk of homelessness, DV victim, or someone fleeing a human trafficking situation. Now, when I talk about priority populations, this is inclusive of one of the four requirements. The City of Oceanside has, we are recommending the priority populations, which is having a local preference, which is mimicking our normal program and as well as having, focusing on three targets. Senior population, persons with permanent disability, and families with dependent children. One of the really cool features about this program is that this program comes with services attached to it. So, it's not just housing. Required service is to provide a service navigation. And they also provided funding to mitigate any barriers to housing. That includes deposit fees. That includes even up to furnishing the home. So, any kind of barrier to housing, there is funding provided. 3,500 is the average cap, but it could fluctuate based on the need. One important note to highlight is that these vouchers aren't like the other vouchers where they can be reissued. After September 30th, 2023, the voucher will not be able to be reissued. That means if someone is terminated for whatever reason, we lose that voucher. And that's something important to note because we have to be very strategic in our selection process of those who are chosen. So, one of the required, one of the requirements in the HUD notice is a partnership with the COC. They are the referral mechanism. So, we have no control of who comes in, but we do have power in prioritizing our population. We also selected, we selected priority referral mechanisms so that we can ensure that the local service providers in-house are the ones that are getting priority to serve our Oceanside residents experiencing homelessness.
Because the requirement is that it be an Oceanside resident, correct?
So, the, just like our normal programs, we have to have, we can't have a resident requirement, but we can have a local preference. And there is more than enough individuals experiencing homelessness in Oceanside that would complete the 43 vouchers. By the time we get to non-residents, we'll be full. So, as I said before, being strategic in the selection process for these vouchers. These vouchers are designed to help those who may not meet all the requirements to receive certain services. This isn't for the high-risk, service-resistant, high-utilizers. These are for the working homeless, the ones who fell through the cracks, the residents who had a series of unfortunate events happen to them and they need that help. So, we're calling these the golden ticket because we're able to help those who normally wouldn't qualify for services like this and we're housing them. And this is a visual of the workflow on how it works. I won't go through it, but in the slides, you guys can refer to it. Essentially, how it works is we get referrals from the COC. And from there, we work with the service providers to provide the housing and the attached services. So, at this time, because of the waiver that we have, we're able to begin the operation component of the EHV program. But we still have to adopt a formal, we have to adopt the administrative plan formally. And we are beginning the process now with the 45-day comment period. We have to formalize the administrative plan by December 30th. But we would like to hear council feedback so that we can incorporate any recommendations that you may have into the formalized administrative plan. So, the recommendations is, I mean, we've already approved them. We're just here to get public comment, public review, and to get your guys' feedback so we can incorporate it into the present, into the final administrative plan. And I believe that's my presentation. And I'll take questions at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Roman. Do we have any requests to speak from the public?
There are no requests to speak from the public on this item.
Okay. So, this is a presentation. We are not being asked for action until November 10th, 2021, when this will be back for approval before the CDC. But it is here for comments from the council. We do have a request from Councilmember Rodriguez.
Really quickly, I appreciate this and I look forward to seeing this come forward and approved. I do see the priorities that the EHV program has with respect to the individual, you know, resident of Oceanside. Obviously, you just explained that. And meet one of the following categories. Seniors aged 62 and older, persons with permanent disability, or families with dependent children. When you're asking for our feedback, like, could we present, for example, as another priority? I mean, I think the seniors and the kids and all that, I mean, those are definitely part of it. But I think veterans, our veterans here in Oceanside being next to Camp Pendleton, I think should definitely be a part of the category to help out. You know, I wish we had a lot more of these vouchers, but if there happens to be one and it's a veteran, I would like that feedback to be a part of it if that's something that you can take note of.
Councilmember Rodriguez, absolutely. And I should have mentioned this from the beginning. One of the things I learned in our division is that the veterans are always a priority and it goes without saying. We always will prioritize our veterans. There are, there is a veteran program, but that does not mean that they are There are, there is a veteran program, but that does not mean that they are not going to be a priority population in our EHV program.
Thank you. I see no other lights. Thank you, Ms. Roman. Look forward to seeing you again on November 10th. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's take up item number 17, which is communications from the public regarding items not on this agenda.
And we have five speakers registered to speak on items off of the agenda. Our first speaker is on Zoom. It is Shelley Parker, to be followed by Sandy Beal, also on Zoom, to be followed by Kelly McCormick, also on Zoom. And we are getting Shelley Parker on the line right now.
Yeah, good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. I was privileged to have a phone conversation with Attorney Hamilton this afternoon, and so I am withdrawing anything that I'm going to say right at this moment about, or I will not be speaking. So thank you very much. I did send something in, but thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Parker.
Thank you. So we'll move on to our next speaker on Zoom. It's Sandy Beal, to be followed by Kelly McCormick, to be followed by Andrew Androuff, who is here in person. And...
Ms. Beal.
Ms. Beal?
Okay.
Okay, there you are.
I'm here. Okay. Honorable Mayor Sanchez and City Council members, I'm speaking for the homeowners of Rancho San Luis Rey Mobile Home Park. I'll make this short. It has been brought to my attention that city officials may be meeting with certain individuals that say they have Rancho San Luis Rey's best interests in mind. If this were true, the homeowners of Rancho San Luis Rey would have been informed about the content of these meetings. You see me at almost every city council meeting. I'm humbly asking you to respond when I email you. I realize we are low on your list of priorities. I'm just asking you to keep me informed about what is going on with our health and safety inspection, among other issues. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Beal.
Thank you. Our next public comment is from Kelly McCormick, and we're going to get Kelly McCormick here on the line, to be followed by Andrew Androuff, to be followed by Ken Layton. And we have one speaker that was registered under a different item, Tom Sensenstaffer, who will also be here in person. So Mrs. McCormick, whenever you're ready.
Good evening. Thank you for your time, and I apologize for the bandage on my nose, but I had some surgery. So there you go. I'm the parent of a high school student, a college student, and I'm a public health educator. And as you may know, September is Suicide Prevention Month. Please recognize that part of an effective strategy for reducing the rate of suicide must include strategies to reduce marijuana use, especially by teens and young adults. There is a significant body of evidence linking marijuana use and suicide, especially in these age groups. A 2019 review of multiple publications found that adolescent marijuana use was associated with increased depression in young adults, and it tripled the risk of suicide attempts. In Colorado, marijuana is the most prevalent substance found in completed teen suicides. Please recognize that when you partner with marijuana industry to bring more marijuana businesses into the city, and when you allow aggressive advertising, you are contributing to the problem. Numerous surveys confirm that teens who view marijuana advertising are more likely to have a positive view of the drug. People are led to believe falsely that marijuana is harmless. Young people don't realize that high THC vapes, dabs, and concentrates are hijacking the brain and rewiring the circuitry until harm has already been done. If you want to have an impact on the suicide rate, we must be willing to acknowledge this risk factor and be willing to do something about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we'll move to our in-person comments. Our first comments from Andrew Androuff, to be followed by Ken Layton, to be followed by Tom Sensenstaffer. And I apologize if I'm mispronouncing that last name. Mr. Androuff, whenever you're ready.
Good evening, Drew Androuff, District 1. I'd like to address our District 1 council member and our part-time resident, Cory Jensen. Ms. Jensen, District 1 has spoken, and it's evident by the overwhelming number of signatures that your recall has received, that you aren't fit to be our district representative. You obviously must have deceived this council because, during the interview process, because I can't imagine that anyone sitting up on the dais, knowing what they know today, would appoint you to that position today. Frankly, I'm not sure why you want to be a council member. We know that you've never been active in the district. Nobody's ever seen or heard from you before you were appointed to this council. But that's probably because, at best, you're only here part-time when you're not renting out your vacation rental. You didn't show up to council meetings. You've never provided any public comment. You've never even applied to be on a city committee. You haven't even so much as volunteered at any of our local community programs. Even as a council member, you can't even bother to show up to public meetings that discuss things that are important to our district. You were absent from the Banshell and Junior Sayon meetings when you knew that was a topic that was very heated and dear to a lot of people in Oceanside. You voted to shut down vital facilities like Brook Street. You rarely provide any comment while you're on the dais. Then when you actually have something to say, you prove a fundamental lack of knowledge on the subject. Ms. Jensen, if you have any integrity, you'll take the opportunity tonight and make a public apology to everybody here in Oceanside, and avoid the embarrassment of being recalled. Resign from your position effective immediately tonight. My name is Drew Androuff. I'm running for Oceanside City Council in District 1, and I actually live in Oceanside. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ken Layton, to be followed by Tom Sensenstaffer. Hopefully, I'm pronouncing that right. Thank you. I got the thumbs up. Mr. Layton, whenever you're ready.
Ken Layton, speaking only for myself. Usually, when people try to use lawyers for bad intent, they don't get away with it. Appointed Councilwoman Cory Jensen had an attorney demand a retraction about a story I wrote claiming lies and misrepresentation. There were no lies. There was no retraction. That same attorney also sent a letter to the City of Oceanside that said, "You better not allow this recall to proceed." The recalls in the city essentially said, paraphrasing here, "Pound sand, stop annoying us." And what do you know, the attorney and his worthless threats just went away. Oh, and by the way, the recall's doing just fine. But there is one malicious lawsuit horror story that is proceeding posthaste, and some council members are directly responsible for merely circulating the Noa North River Farms petition. Newport Beach developer Integral fired legal claims against two locals whose big crime was that they got the question on the ballot. And what do you know, Oceanside voters rejected North River Farms 2 to 1. But the shyster developers and their raft of corporate attorneys figured out a way to get even and work the system and sue these ladies, a retired schoolteacher and a student, who are now on the hook for a quarter million dollars in legal fees, all because they showed a way for Oceanside voters to reject an awful development you tried to ram down our throats. We all make mistakes. Councilmembers Weiss and Kine came around and admitted they stepped in it by appointing Cory Jensen. And now it is up to you, Mr. Weiss, as a supporter of North River Farms, to publicly decry these white-collar thugs from using sleazy legal maneuvers to promote their cause, dragging these ladies into potential financial ruin simply because they have access to corporate, to a corporate legal team. Integral must hear it from you, Mr. Weiss, that such malicious, litigious creeps are not welcome to do business in Oceanside because we don't want to do business with people like you, who abuse the legal system to prey on people who just want people to vote. Mr. Rodriguez will sell himself out to whoever gives him campaign cash, and there's no ethics expectations from you, sir. But please, Mr. Weiss, as one of the two surviving North River Farms enablers, we urge that you stand up and decry this malicious abuse of the legal system and tell Integral to withdraw the suit, or else they're not welcome anymore in Oceanside. I guess that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom Sensenstaffer?
There must be a history to your last name, sir.
My last name? Sensenstaffer. God bless this chamber. Good to see y'all here. I'm here for some simple things. It has to do with law enforcement and has to do with safety and money. I live here. I ride my bike here. I walk. I drive my car. And the coast highway is out of control. 25 miles an hour is a joke. Everybody's going 45. You've combined this with outdoor dining. You've got people all over on these sidewalks eating dinner. One of these cars or motorcycles gets out of control, and you've got dead people. And then you've got lawsuits, and then that's money. So my recommendation would be to enforce the speed limits. At least put up one of them thing, signs that says you're going over 25, little digital radar things. Also, there's a problem with, on that coast highway, with noise. People have got these outrageous lack of mufflers or whatever. You go into Carlsbad, and it says, "We will enforce noise stuff." There's nothing here, so they all come down here and race up and down the coast highway. And I just would like to say that to everybody, and if there's anybody that can do anything about it, that'd be fantastic. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, sir. We do have a couple of our police officers, including the chief, back there, so perhaps you can have a conversation outside. Thank you. It is 6 o'clock. It is a time certain for our one public hearing item, which is item number 15, so let's go ahead and get to that. That is the adoption of a resolution establishing the adopted text change to Article 36 of the zoning ordinance as part of the implementing document of the local coastal program, that's LCPA 21-00004, to remove certain separation requirements for tattoo establishments. I'm going to go ahead and open up this public hearing and request disclosure from council members with respect to constituent contacts as well as correspondence.
Staff.
To staff. Staff. Thank you. And Mr. Navarro, as our city clerk, do you have any correspondence and/or petitions?
The city clerk's office has not received any correspondence on this item.
Thank you very much. We're going to go ahead and begin testimony with Stephanie Servantes, an associate planner with the City of Oceanside.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name's Stephanie Servantes with the Planning Division, and I will be presenting the local coastal program amendment tonight. Staff recommends that the city council adopt a resolution establishing the adopted text change to Article 36 of the zoning ordinance as part of the implementing document of the local coastal program. That is LCPA 21-00004. On August 18th of this year, the city council voted to introduce zoning amendment 21-0001. That tax amendment to Article 36 of the zoning ordinance was to remove the separation requirement of tattoo establishments from residential districts if an intervening freeway or state highway is located between the proposed location and that residential district. The ordinance was adopted on September 2nd, 2021, at the second reading. The adopted code language is not in effect in the city's coastal zone until the LCPA is certified by the California Coastal Commission. Zoning Amendment 21-0001 will not impact coastal access, water, or marine resources, sensitive habitat, visual resources, visitor-serving uses, or public facilities. The adopted text does not approve any individual locations, and any future locations within the coastal zone will need to comply with the local coastal program. At this time, staff recommends that the city council adopt a resolution establishing the adopted text change to Article 36 of the zoning ordinance as part of the implementing document of the local coastal program. I am available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Servantes. This is a time for public to speak and comment on this item. You do not have to have signed up for speaking. You can stand up, go to the podium and speak for three minutes. I see no one rising. Mr. Navarro, do we have anyone on Zoom that wishes to speak on this item?
Nobody is raising their hand on Zoom on this item.
Okay. All right. I'm going to go ahead and close this portion of the item, the public hearing, and go to Councilmember Weiss.
Move approval, staff recommendation. Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second for this item. Sorry. Covered up my paperwork here. So that is to adopt the resolution. No other comments? Please vote.
Motion approved, 4-0.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other requests to speak from the public on items not on the agenda?
We have none.
Okay. Done with that. Okay, so we're at the mayor, excuse me, general council member comments. Do we have any requests to speak at this time from our council members? Okay. I do have a couple of things. I'll try to speak fast here. There is a really great thing happening on September 25th. What is it? It's a job fair here in Oceanside, here at Civic Center. It is Saturday, September 25th, 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Very excited about this. As you may have heard, some of our businesses are hurting because they need workers. They need employees. And so we have, as of the last count, about 40. I'd like to go ahead and read off some of these names. I'll do it pretty quickly. 333 Pacific, Arrowood Golf Course, Bella Mente Montessori Academy, Boys and Girls Club of Oceanside, Centrum, City of Oceanside, that's Human Resources Department, Fire Department, and Parks and Rec. Employment Development Department, known as EDD, FedEx, Genentech, Goodwill Industries of San Diego County, Health Right 360, Holiday Inn Oceanside, Hydronautics, Lincoln Military Housing, Lot Life of Liberty Adult Day Program, excuse me, LOL, Life of Liberty Adult Day Program, Marquee Staffing, Maricostas College Community Learning Center, Maricostas College Technology Career Institute, that's for training programs, Mission Pacific Hotel, Natural Alternatives International, Oceanside Police Department, Oceanside Unified, Ali Salumeria, Pride Industries, Qualicare, Home Care, Seber, Seabird Restaurant Resort, Sizzler, Spectrum, Stiko Industries, Thai Services of the YMCA of San Diego, Terry, That Boy Good, the UPS Store, and Tri-City Medical Center, UEI College, United Association Local 230, Urban Core, Vista Community Clinic, Vista Unified School District, West Coast Tomato Growers, and Zig Zag Pizza. And we're getting more. So come on down. We also, we're talking also, NAACP is going to be there, too. They're going to be offering to help put together resumes. So we're going to, we're actually going to see if we can get some other cosponsorships so that we can really get the word out there. Again, it's Saturday, 25th, 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Also, really quick, we have the Model Train Swap Meet. That's October 9th, Swap Meet at 8:00 a.m. to noon, sponsored by the North County Model Railroad Society. It's going to be at Oceanside Heritage Park, and that's at 220 Pyree Drive, Oceanside. Make it a fun train day. And lastly, I do want to say, while, this is to have a moment of silence, so I'll say it last. Councilmember Rodriguez?
I do want to say one thing. I just want to thank city staff, the fire chief and the police chief, for the phenomenal, I say phenomenal from the standpoint of just well-organized, safe, community event to honor those who passed on 9/11. Very organized. I was just, I was almost in tears at just how many people were there and just how smooth it went. And so I just want to thank Deanna and all staff who participated in holding that, hosting that event. That really means a lot to me, and I know it means a lot, too, to Oceanside guys. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember Rodriguez. That is really from all of us here at, from the city council. And I have some sad news. We have, we did lose the 13. We also lost the naval officers, and we lost a very dear friend, Reverend Fugatua Teale from the Fuller Gospel Samoan Christian Church of Oceanside. Pastor Teale... Pastor Tealy has, I don't even remember a time when I have not seen him so active, active in working with our Samoan community, especially with our youth, getting involved, especially during dark times when we needed his, his leadership. With the 12 Samoan churches of Oceanside and Vista, they came, they came through and worked with our police department in, in addressing some of the issues that we were having. Pastor Tealy has always been there for us. It is unfortunate. It was a boating accident while he was on vacation, actually during a church conference in Texas. And it is just, I mean, he, he has, he has served us with the police department in being a pastor, and in helping our outreach, and in working with SOS, and again, with our faith-based. So I'd like to have a moment of silence in his honor. Thank you. This meeting is adjourned to workshop on September 29th, which is a Wednesday, and that is a workshop on, to discuss community choice energy.